All right, Ms. Swain, we think we have full house ready to go.
Right. Good evening and welcome to the City of Sunbury Council Meeting. It is January third, two thousand and twenty-four at seven thirty P. M. Would you please join me in a moment of silent prayer and pledge of allegiance? And to a prosperous and peaceful two thousand and twenty-four.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and no such as law.
All right, we are going to start with the oath of office. We have Councilwoman Cindy Cooper. A newly elected Councilwoman Molly Drayer, and I'm going to swear you in outright.
You first.
Well, let's let's do them both at the same time. Is that okay? Please raise your right hand.
Aye, state your.
Aye, neither. Molly Drayer.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the laws of the United States of America.
That I will support the laws of the United States of America.
That I will support the laws of the United States of America.
The state of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
The city of Sundar.
City of Sundar.
City of Sundar.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a member.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the city of Sundar.
City of Sundar.
Of the city of Sundar.
Counsel for the duration of my term.
Counsel for the duration of my term.
Counsel for the duration of my term.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Billy.
Oh, okay.
Do we have any pictures that wanted to be taken?
I think we got all action was happening.
All right. All right, good deal. Councilman Martin asked a good question. He asked if I was sworn in. I was recently elected to a four-year term. I was sworn in last week by law director Breen.
Just in the reason being, you know, in the in the absence of the chief and because of the police department and his role in that, there could be an emergency situation on New Year's Day, or so we wanted to make sure we took care of it just so it is done.
I I assumed I just usually it happens at a meeting and I was surprised, so I.
All right. Ms. Swain, your call.
Mayor St. John.
Here.
Mr. Keppel.
Here.
Molly Drayer.
Here.
Marina, oh, no, I've switched mine. Mr. Neff.
Here.
Mr. Gumney.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mrs. Cooper.
Here.
Right, everybody present. Uh, we do start with a public hearing. Eagle Creek Highlands rezoning application. Thank you. We do have stenographer here this evening. Mr. Breen, may I pass it to you just for order of operations, please?
You can. So this is a stenographer that will take a record of the public hearing. Anybody that thinks they might testify as to this matter, we're going to have you be sworn in. So you're going to stand, raise your right hand to be sworn by the court reporter. It doesn't obligate you to testify. Uh, if you think you could, uh, then please do stand and be sworn. If you don't and you come to testify, then we have to stop and swear you in as we go along. So at this point, you can stand and raise your right hand, please.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony will present will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
I do. All right, do we have any exhibits that we'd like to enter in?
We do. Uh, for the record, I would like to enter into, uh, evidence as exhibits. The rezoning application itself as exhibit A. We have a public hearing notice as exhibit B. We have the proof of mailing from the post office as exhibit C. And we have the Eagle Creek Highlands Planned Residence District Development Text as exhibit D. With the applicant's, uh, agreement, I'd like to introduce these as exhibits.
Excellent. Except. Except the exhibits in, uh, these are in page, uh, pages three through forty-eight in your packet if you need to reference. With that said, I'd like to, uh, invite the applicant to go ahead and present. Mr. Fisher, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. David Fisher here on behalf of the opponent, David Fisher, Kephart Fisher LLC, two oh seven North Fourth Street, Columbus, Ohio. I have with me tonight our development team, which is Jim Hills from Polte and Gary Smith from G two, our land planning group. The easiest way to explain this to you, with the exception of our new council member, and I apologize, so we'll get into as much detail as you'd like, is this is really Eagle Creek two point O. Uh, last year, we worked through over about an eighteen-month period, a zoning on a project known as Eagle Creek. Uh, west of I seventy-one on three Bs and a K, three Bs and a K road. Uh, that was finalized last fall, and we're proceeding with that development. Now, since that time, Polte has been working with us on a land assemblage south of that development, so further down three Bs and a K road. Uh, in working with the, uh, city administration and with your plan and zoning commission. We, uh, have brought forth a plan that was approved by Planning and Zoning a month or so ago and is now to you for consideration in a public hearing with a recommendation for approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. A lot of that work was basically, shall I say, marrying this project up to the Eagle Creek project down due north of this. So it is extremely similar to Eagle Creek. It's this project's eighty-six acres versus eighty-four point eighty-seven acres. This is two hundred and thirty-nine lots versus two hundred and thirty-two lots. We agreed with the city in the process to extend the homeowners association we created for Eagle Creek down into also encompass Eagle Creek Highlands. That's important. Mr. Smith is going to go over all of the amenities for this project in a few minutes. In the original Eagle Creek zoning, we had some playing fields and shelters and that sort of thing. We, uh, the miszoning included things like a splash pad, a dog park, uh, more open space, more walking trails. And we're ha- we're marrying up these two developments. Eagle Creek will be Highlands so that the residents of all those develop, all that developed area can join in and share in the use of these amenity features. And also importantly, as you know, as communities grow and mature, the overall cost of upkeep of those amenities can become an issue for residents. So by marrying the two developments together, you have more residents within the two communities sharing in the cost of those amenities. So it's not as burdensome on the neighborhood to maintain those amenities in top-notch form. Once again, I'll have Mr. Smith go through those in more details as we go forward. Like Eagle Creek, this is all single-family homes. Similar lot sizes, similar architecture, uh, similar density, a little bit higher here, two point seven eight density. Uh, same tree preservation provisions as we had in Eagle Creek. The same development standards. The same agreements to join the NCA and enter into development agreements with the city. Once again, it is a almost a carbon copy of Eagle Creek, except for those items that I just mentioned a couple of minutes ago. Also, the same divergences as we requested at Eagle Creek, and I think it's appropriate that we spend a couple of minutes reviewing those together if we can. If you have your development text handy, it is on page eight of the development text. And let me get mine handy. We'll review those together. That's in tab two of your booklet if you have it handy. And it begins on page eight. Once again, these are the exact same divergences that we had on Eagle Creek.
Council packet. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. Uh, for council members, it's you got a double number. It's number fifteen, or excuse me, sixteen on the top.
Oh, we're going with the number on the top of the page at the bottom.
You can go with whatever one you want, Councilman Martin.
Well, on mine, eight is on sixteen, not fifteen.
We're going to go through the differences. It's number six. The bottom. There you go.
Okay.
All with me?
Yes.
Okay, once again, same divergences to the letter as what we have in Eagle Creek. Eight of them. The first one is the intensity of use. Under your zoning code, if you meet certain standards, you can increase your density. Uh, the maximum density is two point five one units per acre. But if you meet certain standards, that can be increased. We're asking it to be increased to two point seven eight units per acre. That is far below what the code litifies permit with respect to the scale of development we're doing. That's the first divergence. Um, the second divergence deals with, uh, kind of anomaly in your code that says that in a planned residence district, within any single acre, there cannot be more than, uh, three units. That really doesn't work because of roadways and open space and amenities. So we're asking for that divergence. We, we, we meet the standard overall, but not on any one particular acre just because of the way development works and the lot sizes we're dealing with. The third is a setback variance for front yards. Um, your code requires a front setback of forty feet. And and it depends on the right away from the adjoining street. We're asking for a twenty-five-foot front setback. That's a setback standard that's been established on a number of developments in Sunbury over the years, both on this side of seventy-one and on the other side of seventy-one. So that's not a new standard or a change in development that we're looking for that's been approved routinely by the city in the past. Divergence four is a side yard setback. It limits side yards to seven feet on either side. We're asking that to be reduced to six feet. Once again, that's a standard divergence that's been granted many times in the city for, for developments. Next is a rear yard setback. That requires a rear yard not less than forty feet. Uh, we're asking that to be reduced to thirty-five feet. Uh, we find that that, uh, people like that additional area to be used for open space and that sort of thing. Divergence six is maximum lot coverage. The code requires not more than twenty-five percent of the lot be covered by previous service circumstances. And no combination of buildings can be in excess of thirty percent. We're asking that to be increased to fifty percent for the fifty-two-foot and fifty-six-foot lots and fifty-one percent for the sixty-foot lots. This allows, we believe, for better quality of home and consistent, once again, with other neighborhoods that have been developed over the years in Sunbury. Divergence seven is structure separation. That no building can be located closer than twenty-five feet to another structure unless the adjacent walls are masonry. We're asking that separation to be reduced to twelve feet. Um, and once again, that is a standard that your fire department has approved of in the past and has approved up here. Standard development practices in and around central Ohio. Also note the Ohio Basic Building Code allows structures as close as ten feet, and we're not asking for that limited variance. And lastly, divergence eight, which is, uh, your regulations concerning tree preservation. Just as we did at Eagle Creek. We're asking for a branch permit us to move forward with the tree preservation plan that's in your package that basically supports the fact that you do have some dead and diseased trees and ash trees that shouldn't be counted. But overall, by the time the developments completed with all the street trees and on lot trees will be planted, we'll have more than sufficient tree coverage to support all of your tree policies from the city of Sunbury. So those are the divergences. Once again, absolutely no changes. I think in my recollection, it's been a while, but word for word, the same divergences that were considered and agreed to by Planning and Zoning Commission and by council on the Eagle Creek zoning. And that were approved by Planning and Zoning Commission on this application that's now recommended to you for approval. Happy to discuss more of those in detail if you'd like. Uh, I'm going to now turn it over to Gary Smith, our land planner, who will go over the plan. And I've also asked him to review the amenities for you. I think you'll find the amenities very exciting here as they relate to even more amenities on this site. Once again, married up with Eagle Creek to a more so, the people that live here are going to have quite an energized community with a lot going on. I mentioned some of them like the dog park and the splash pad, shelters and those sorts of things. So Gary, I'm going to turn it over to you, please.
And Gary, if you wouldn't mind, I do have also an exhibit that I've marked as E that is a photocopy of your video presentation. I'm going to mark that as an exhibit as well with, uh, the applicant's agreement.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you very much. Um, Gary Smith, uh, seven twenty East Broad Street, Columbus, Ohio. I'm the owner of G two Planning Design. We do all the planning, landscape, architecture for Eagle Creek and now, uh, Eagle Creek Highlands, what we're essentially calling Eagle Creek Phase Two. Um, if we could just go to that, actually, the second slide, but we'll pause here real quick. So, uh, pretty similar, uh, in terms of the site from, uh, kind of the original Eagle Creek. The one big difference, uh, if you recall in the original Eagle Creek, we had a, we had a pretty big stand of trees, um, kind of right in that area that we, uh, that we basically developed a conservation area, a park around. We don't have kind of the same circumstances. We've got a, a, a couple of areas where we have some scattered tree rows. But in general, the site is primarily farmland. Um, so it makes it, uh, pretty easy to kind of lay out a site and and organize a site for us. And so if you'll go to the next one. There we go. So, um, I know everybody here is, um, pretty familiar with Eagle Creek Phase One, with the exception of our, our new council member, uh, Drayer. Is that correct?
That's fine.
Perfect. Um, so one of the things that, um, I wanted to point out and what David was alluding to earlier is kind of the idea of connecting up all of these different green spaces and amenities, uh, throughout both communities. So, um, you know, the, the original layout, you recall the original layout of Eagle Creek, we had a couple of different, and I apologize if your microphone is not picking me up here, but we had a couple of different, um, open spaces in the original Eagle Creek. We had our main open space, which consisted of a couple of shelters and, uh, some, uh, of all organized, um, uh, sports fields. Um, and then a top lot, and then we also had our preserve area where we're going to make some, uh, path connectivity. And then we had a couple of, of open spaces kind of at the end of some of these things. And so, um, one of the things that we tried to do, now we had a kind of extensive path network that kind of ran uh, along the backside in the, in the open space adjacent to the freeway there. Um, and then path, and then, and then those paths connected up to path networks in all of these individual open spaces that kind of go through the development. And of course, all of the streets of development have sidewalks, with the exception of the areas where we do have, where we replace the sidewalks with the, the larger multi-use path. And so what we really tried to work hard to do, uh, here was make sure that there was plenty of pedestrian connectivity between the two communities and an even more extended path network. So we have over approximately a mile and a half of new trail in this section, in addition to what we already have in, in phase one. So all of those trail connections come up through, uh, they get made, uh, over here, uh, connect up over here and over into what we have, uh, dog park area, dedicated dog park. Uh, where, you know, anybody in the development can go, let their dog loose, um, you know, let it play. And then we have our main amenity area, which I'll get into in more detail. But then we've also tried to work a lot of open space through the center of this project. So you'll have a lot more homes, uh, in the center of this project that actually back up to dedicate your open space. So you can see how that open space kind of weaves through uh, the development and incorporating paths that take you, again, the multi-use trails that take you through all of these areas and connect up to the various amenity areas. If you want to jump to the next slide. So this just gives you a little bit better indication of kind of layout of how the paths work through the site. Uh, and ultimately where they can, uh, connect up. So we, we just, we painted the paths red uh, just so that it's a little bit easier to see and kind of understand how all those paths connect through those different areas. And again, keep in mind, some of those paths connect the sidewalks, uh, sidewalks on all of the streets. And so uh, there's connectivity, uh, continually throughout the development. There's also street connectivity, uh, from the original Eagle Creek to the Eagle Creek Highlands. And so a lot of ways to kind of get back and forth between the two. Um, you know, go walk, visit your neighbors, visit your friends, take advantage of the different amenities through the development. Uh, if you could go on to the next slide. So this is, uh, just a, a slide of the entry feature. Um, I think one of the things that we are trying to do essentially is make this feel uh, exactly like Eagle Creek. And so the entry feature is going to be, uh, pretty much the same as what we have on the original. Um, and we're going to use kind of the same side engine, the same entry feature here. So we're trying to keep a cohesive theme and look throughout the development. Now, one more. Okay, so this is where we get to kind of the main amenity areas. As I mentioned before, we have kind of the dog park uh, that's, that's connected up to that, uh, larger trail network. In the center of the development, uh, we, we have, uh, a much larger green area than we had kind of in the original, and we're using that to create a couple of different opportunities. One is around the perimeter of that, we're going to have mixed youth, mixed use path all the way around the perimeter. So in effect, it could become, you know, a great walking path or a jogging path for somebody that wants to go out and get exercise. Um, but then we also in there are incorporating some different amenities, uh, that we don't have up in the northern half, uh, which is, um, uh, pickleball courts, which is, as most of you know, is a very rapidly, uh, growing sport. Um, gaining popularity, uh, all over the country. Um, we include a, a shelter building. I don't know if you guys have seen this. We include a shelter building, that shelter building by restrooms, uh, for use by, uh, residents. Um, we'll have a splash pad. Uh, the advantage, uh, to us for the splash pad is that it can serve, uh, a much wider, uh, cross-section of residents. So even if you're, you know, if you have infants, uh, if you have toddlers, um, you can essentially allow them to go in the splash pad without concern, you know, that they're going to get hurt or, you know, need to be supervised constantly, worried about them drowning. Um, also, uh, if you have kids that are special needs, uh, that can't necessarily swim by themselves, a splash pad is a great way for, for those, uh, folks to cool off as well. Um, so, um, incorporating that splash pad and then, uh, also incorporating a playground uh, all within kind of a, a centralized use. So if you, if you're a mom or a dad and wants to take your kids over, one of your kids wants to run around the splash pad, the other kid wants to play on the playground. Uh, you know, there's going to be seating areas where you can kind of watch and monitor both. And I mean, as a parent, you know, you know, if you're like me, you really like to kind of keep an eye on your kids and just make sure that they're, they're safe and not falling down, things like that. And so that's essentially what we, uh, try to do with the main areas, really make it kind of a main activity area, uh, for, uh, this development. And then if you'll go on to the next slide. So we've got some examples of the different types of houses, the architecture. So these are the same examples that we shared, I think, with the original, uh, Eagle Creek. There might even be one more slide of that. Oh, there's a couple more. Sorry, Tim. But so a lot of variety in the architecture, uh, as you can see. Um, and so with that, I'm happy to turn it over to the rest of you guys unless there's anything else that you think you need to add.
Uh, go back a little, the initial wrong, and I just want to point out one thing that was requested to keep going. Uh, keep going. They're right there. I just wanted to point out down here in the lower corner. There is this house, and then they have a, they own all the way out to three Bs and K, but in the event that any of this would develop to the south, we were asked to, we didn't include this stuff up here. So in the event that that would develop to the south, we'd already have a street in place to serve that. He was like to have more of a street serving connecting developments. So we did add that late in the process of your requested planning and zoning commission. But that's, that's all I have. I can answer the questions.
Thank you very much. Um, we can come back to council questions. Staff, do we have anyone from staff to ask Thomas a question? All right, we may go to public participation, um, at this point. Uh, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Okay, come, were you sworn in?
No, I just have a question.
We're, uh, we're in the middle of a public hearing. Um, Mr. Breen.
You can ask the question, but you're going to need to stand and be sworn. Are you sure?
Yeah.
All right, any, uh, public comment? All right, uh, council.
Okay. Um, phase one, is it two and a half homes per acre?
You talk about the initial Eagle Creek, it was, uh, yeah, two point seven three.
Is the original, is the phase one? And another concern, um, two point seven eight is basically three houses per acre. At twelve feet apart, I know that allows for what you want to do, a larger house, a nicer house. But twelve feet apart, that's pretty close. That's a, a busy neighborhood, I would think. Um, what is the big benefit to that?
I think you're seeing a couple of different things in the market today. Um, there've been a lot of changes in the single-family market over the last twenty years. I've been doing this for, for thirty-six years that the standard used to be that we built, you know, eighty and ninety-foot lots and we had a giant backyard. Um, and, you know, we had these nice wide side yards, but we didn't really have a lot of dedicated open space, uh, because the open space was all in the yard. And what's happened with, uh, the residential building market, and you can see this in examples throughout Sunbury, uh, uh and other communities as well. And, and all of these newer communities that are being built, uh, the focus really is on uh shifting the open space out of the yard and more into a community open space where people have actually more space that they can play just in their, than in their kind of fenced in yard. And the, because of the aspiration of the development costs, um, cost of land, cost of materials, um, cost of asphalt, all of those things, the effort has been really to try and reduce as much of the development footprint as possible so that they can get houses kind of in that price range that are affordable to uh most folks. And so the other thing that's happened is demographically, um, you, uh, Moxie's got a good report on this, but, and I would encourage you to kind of take a look at it. Where the family size and the family structure is changing. Um, kids aren't having as many, or I'm sorry, uh, married couples aren't having as many kids. Um, and uh a lot of them are choosing to either live on their own or, or maybe not have any kids at all. And so the desire has gone from kind of having a big expensive yard to having a nicer house on a smaller yard less that they have to maintain and the ability to get out and get into open space that, you know, the whole community maintains and operates uh to be able to kind of interact. And that's, that's a trend that we've seen basically throughout the country, um, you know, including central Ohio, is this shift in buyer preference uh to those kind of smaller, tighter communities.
For Pulte homes?
For Pulte, for D R Horton, for M I Homes, uh, for everybody. Um, in fact, I mean, I'll give you some good examples. Um, North Star is a good example. So back in, when did they originally zone that, Dave?
Twenty years.
So they zoned it 20 years ago and it's all 90 foot lots and they sell on average about 10 lots a year. Because nobody can afford them, um, they don't want the big lots. Um, this really is all about kind of buyer preference and what people are looking for in a home these days uh because of some of those changing preferences.
By the way, that, that standard goes for really across the market. I mean, Gary mentioned a few things, but Romanian use, custom door, M I Homes, they, they complete market amen is for the small lot with more open space to be enjoyed. So I don't have to mow a brick big yard, but there's a yard out there and open space you can use. This mode for me is part of the ones.
Yep.
It's not limited to anyone in particular builder. I would also say in some area in other places, we, we do have some developments that are less than 12, go down as far as uh 10 plus several, which is a lot.
And the uh H O A does maintain all these vacant, the, the parks and the pad and?
Yes, ma'am.
And which is one of the reasons why we put the two together. It's, it's simple math. The more people paying into an association to maintain all these little nice amenities, the less cost there is for each individual thing. So I think the, the city was wise to ask us to marry the two up into one big association.
There a school planned at any point, elementary or anything? Cause usually a neighborhood like this, I would imagine would attract younger people. With a splash pad and I would.
Not, there's not a school site planned here, but this is all the major schools, I believe, on, is that on that side?
Yes.
Want to answer? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
You know, I did have one more question. I did briefly read through some of this and it mentioned um commercial. I think on page. Um.
I think that's your city text, not our text. I think, I think we, we specify the city text and then answer it. I think that's already sold.
Okay, and that, that could be, I was wondering what kind of commercial would be?
It's all single thing. So what we do to help you, uh, now, this is we, we state your federal requirements and then we answer them. So there is no.
Thank you.
Any other comment or question? All right, uh, I'll move to close the public hearing. I think I can just do that. Or do we have to do a motion?
No, if there's not no other testimony, we will close the public hearing.
Public hearing is closed. All right. Thank you, sir. All right, we're on to the minutes from December 20th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Good motion by Councilwoman Cooper.
Second.
Second by David Martin. Call call.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mr. Knapp?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Dreer?
Yes.
She abstained from these minutes.
Um, I, I mean, you were not at the last meeting, so I would abstain just because they don't care about their pockets in any way and this man, I'm just home.
And it's a capital.
Okay.
Yes.
Six days, minutes passed.
All right. We're on to the visitor's section. Are there any visitors that would like to speak with city council? All right. All right, we're on to committee reports. I bypassed Mrs. Dreer, Ms. Dreer, uh, Mr. Grumney.
Yes, thank you. So uh, Mr. Martin and I had our first parks and rec meeting of the year. Um, and it was a very successful, a lot getting done. Um, but it was, it was a good meeting. I think Dave clocked it at 16 minutes, so we, we were very efficient. Uh, yeah, very efficient under our time. Um, so we talked a little about the national fitness campaign that was brought up, I believe, last council meeting. Uh, this is a, a campaign to bring outdoor exercise equipment to the community. And uh, uh, we've had some uh basic research done uh by Alyssa. She, uh, she did some uh, uh, great work on contact. I believe it was five communities that currently have it in place. And uh, the overall theme was uh, the community loved it. Um, difficult to keep young kids off if it's in an area that's, that's highly, you know, utilized by children to begin with. So it was around playground equipment. One community did have some vandalism concerns, but it was brought, Alyssa brought up that um putting in a security camera and notification as being viewed is, is a good deterrent for that. Um, as far as uh fun or um, yeah, so uh, I, I think we've got some base information to use for future discussion. Um, as we talk about parks and the need for the community in the near more, not so distant future, maybe, maybe uh in the next fiscal year or so. But uh, good talk and, and great research. And uh, if you want to read, you can certainly get a copy of Alyssa's uh report because she did a very thorough job in that. And then uh, we talked a little about, about the uh Ohio Fallen Heroes Memorial and the state budget request. Um, the grant's been filed, uh, one of three grants that were included. Um, which is expected to be uh viewed and, and um a decision made uh no later than June 30th, but more likely April, May timeframe. Um, to, or maybe March, April to uh let us know how that's going. And that would essentially pay for the bulk of the, of the uh improvements at the, at the memorial. Uh, including a cement foundation, removing the bricks that are currently there, putting down a brick uh, uh foundation, placing the, or cement foundation, placing the bricks back on top of that, matching up some of the sidewalk and, and uh, you know, some of the pavers and uh matching the sidewalks by the bridge. So doing some good work for um, uh, future uh, for future initiatives. And I think there's also decisions about whether or not to add any actual more memorial, um, actual markers or to move forward with a different form. Um, so that's going well. And then Orchard, or excuse me, then we talked about, talked about some of the other parks. Uh, J R Smith is moving along. We're getting some pricing on surveys. Uh, Reservoir Parks is in construction, that's continuing. Uh, and then Old Orchard Park, which we talked about last meeting, um, uh, there was a, there's a walkthrough uh and realize that the existing tree, fruit trees are there, non-bearing. Uh, they have reached their lifespan. Uh, however, they are salvageable and there's some debris maybe to get out there. So we're talking about cleaning up that area to make it a little bit more um accessible. And then considering whether or not um we want to plant some new apple trees in that area uh for citizens to enjoy. So uh, those were all discussed and I think those are the high highlights, unless I missed something. Daryl or Mr. Martin?
Okay, you covered it.
Okay.
You covered all that in 16 minutes?
Yeah, well, if I, I talked.
We talked that fast, but.
Yeah, right, right. So anyways, I think that, that wraps it up.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grumney. Mr. Capel?
Uh, well, we had the services committee meeting prior to this. It was not concluded in as little as uh 16 minutes, and I also don't have near as many notes during the view. Uh, we were focused, uh, we were focused i- in this meeting really on level setting where a lot of our services projects were that have been out. Uh, kind of uh floating for a while without a, a recent update. So I'm really going to hit on two things that were uh of major relevance uh for the group going forward tonight. One was uh, snow and ice management. We're developing uh, our, our streets department is in the middle of developing an SOP for uh, snow and ice removal, uh, where uh we would have a, a definite um approach to how we control for winter weather for snow removal uh every year, which streets get priority. Uh, where we go, uh, how, how uh schedules work in the event uh of a severe emergency, uh, things like that. So uh, that'll be something that you see coming up soon. Uh, and the other big thing was actually a bit that's on our agenda for later tonight. Uh, and it's with potentiary filters at the wastewater treatment plant uh being potentially added in as part of our design uh for the wastewater treatment plan um improvements. Uh, so that is on the agenda for tonight. Uh, we did some discussion around uh what these filters are going to accomplish, why we need them, uh, and eh, how we need to approach uh amendments in the future when it comes to major developments like this.
Great. That's all. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Cooper?
None tonight.
Mr. Martin? Mr. Knapp?
Nothing to report.
Great. Thank you. All right, we are on to the police report. Chief Rob Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the first two items on there was the uh, the fiber update. Um, I'm not going to sit and read through all these you have that, unless you have questions. I'd only important parts here that uh, we have training for the police department, actually tomorrow and then January 8th. And we had reached out to uh Daryl to send it out to staff. We got a really good return on the, on the training for the CPR and first aid. So much that we have to set it up in two different buildings and brought in two instructors. So we hope that that all goes well. Uh, one note that I need, I think we got you an email, Daryl, for uh, the staff will be here tomorrow at 11:30. Yep, got that. Good. Um, I was asked to get some comparisons for 22 and 23 years. Um, in 2022, total calls to service that the police department had was 3,529. This year we had 4,437, which was an increase of 21 and a half percent. Mayor's court, 2022, we had 323 citations. And then 2023 was 337. Detective Smith opened up in 22 and 23, a total of 105 cases. And out of those 105, 99 of those cases have been closed out by him. Uh, we have six cases that we all dispose on. So he's uh, to me, that's just kind of unheard of. He's doing an excellent job with that. I have the stats there for you all that you can read over and I'll just answer any questions if you have.
Any questions for the chief? I just want to say uh, thanks um to your department, especially over the holidays. Sometimes, you know, while we're sitting at home enjoying our time with family, we know your guys are out keeping us safe, so we very much appreciate that. Um, also appreciate you uh acting on the reporting um and getting the year-over-year analysis. Something the chief and I have been talking about is um just enhancing, optimizing the police report, kind of getting a repeatable cadence into it, probably adding some graphs and visualizations so you can uh really quickly ascertain, you know, the information that we think is going to be helpful. Potentially looking at heat maps where we have trends, the type of uh crime that we have, things like that. So that's going to be a focus for us in 2024. And um, we'll, we'll leverage staff and uh police leadership to work on that and get feedback from this team as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
All right, we are on to the administrator report. Mr. Hennessy?
So I just have uh two items to highlight for the report. One is uh, I did a tent on behalf of the city, uh, the most recent fire board meeting. Um, just a couple of things of note. Um, it did approve in a, an, an intergovernmental agreement with Delaware County uh to uh spell out the preliminary financial plans of co-locating the emergency medical services uh facility with the proposed new uh fire station. So again, outlines of financial terms, there's still work to be done in terms of what the design is and uh, but the, but the terms spell out kind of how that will be shared among them. Um, and then the other thing of note, I think uh Mr. Ghost had mentioned this in the past, but again, the board confirmed or the staff confirmed that the uh, the paperwork was submitted successfully to the uh Delaware County Board of uh Elections and you will see the bond levy proposal on the ballot in March of this year. So, so that's issue one, uh, the fire board meeting. And the other thing I just want to note is um the Delaware County Transit has been working on a strategic plan. Um, I've asked Alyssa to prepare a summary uh, the city planner. She's been participating as part of the strategic planning effort. So you'll see that in the packet. But what I did want to note is I have invited Andy uh Volnek, who is the executive director of Transit to uh, to attend a meeting. I think he'll be here if not next meeting. The meeting after that, talk a little bit about the strategic plan, but maybe more importantly, a proposed recommendation concerning the uh creation of a flex zone system here in the city of Sunbury uh to better serve our residents. So um he'll be here soon to talk about that. Any questions for me?
What is a flex zone?
Well, I may not do it justice, but um the city of uh Delaware, I guess, has, is the only place in Delaware County that has a flex zone system. So you have buses uh, uh traveling throughout that uh zone, you know, on some kind of pattern, but also in a, they've got a demand of response component to it. So if they receive a call within the zone, the transit goes, picks you up, delivers you to whatever it might be. In Sunbury, uh, and anywhere else in the county, the only way you get served is by calling in for demand services. So there's no, there's no bus sort of working that region on a consistent basis. So, so this is really an enhanced service, would be enhanced services here in the city of Sunbury. And he'll do a better job explaining it than I will, but that's roughly the difference.
Is that a cost to Sunbury?
So the uh, the resident, or the, the person who uh seeks the services pays the fee for the, for the drive. And it's, it's, it's not a particularly high number. I'll ask Andy to be ready to speak to the, to the fee structure.
Yeah. From what I remember him talking about the Delaware system, I mean, it's like a couple bucks a ride or something. And the majority of the people, I think that during the school year that are um utilizing the service are kids who can't drive, but need to go to work and
Right.
Uh, you know, like that 14, 15, maybe 16, 17, you don't have a car and you need a ride to work and it's like two bucks both ways.
Um. Yeah, that, that's exactly right. It's very, very low cost within the flex zone. If you're in the city of Sunbury or anywhere in the county right now, it's, it's six, if seven, I mean, it.
Eight bucks or.
Yeah, it's something like that. I mean, it's significantly more expensive to do it now. So this uh, this pilot program that they look to do here in Sunbury will substantially reduce costs. And, and yes, as the mayor indicated, that I keep forgetting that point. But a big segment of the riders are, yes, those uh, those young kids uh before and after school. So.
Great.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Any other questions for Mr. Hennessy? All right, great update. Thank you very much. We're on to the engineers report. Uh, Mr. Weddard, if you'd come up to the podium?
Please. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I have a very brief report tonight and some of those things were mentioned. The um reservoir park uh project is uh well underway. I just wanted to tell you that they will be uh drawing down the reservoir level here probably next week. Um, so just so you're aware. Uh, so that they can do some work on the uh, the uh, the structures and the water there. And at Walnut Street, they did complete the geotechnical investigation last week. Thank you for your help with that, Ms. Lane. That was very, very helpful. I made that go smoothly. I don't have the results back yet. Hopefully that has helped go just as smoothly. And uh, that's really all I've got, unless you have any questions. Very little has changed since our last meeting with uh holidays and all.
Any questions for Mr. Weddard?
All right, I will add, maybe uh, we did, you had four.
All right, I will add, maybe uh, we did, you had forwarded to me an email, Sunbury Commerce Park, uh, the development down there. They're looking to do a pre-construction meeting here.
First week of February.
Yeah, so that project is on the verge of beginning.
I'm sorry, which project was that?
We call it Sunbury Commerce Park. It's right down here off of George's Granville.
Granville and Sunbury Meadows Drive.
George'sville, right.
Across from Taquon Down. That's the, so you have a big wall there apparently. I, I did have uh, one thing I wanted to mention. Magnolia Park, all the street lights are off. I don't know if that's by design or if they're, they're out of sync. Murray, are you seeing that?
I've never seen a wall move.
Okay, I haven't seen.
Yeah. I've never seen
I think it's
They, they, I don't think I'm energized yet. I'll check with them.
I don't know if it's a timer setting or whatever.
Have they been on at all?
I haven't seen them on since the roads were paved.
Okay.
So up, up and down Wetherby and Fairland.
Okay, I'll check, I'll check on that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right.
Sorry, I should have mentioned it to you.
No problem.
Earlier.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're on to resolutions. No third readings. We do have a second reading, Resolution two thousand twenty-three dot three seven, a resolution authorizing the execution of a working agreement with the Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District. I, I just wanted to mention that um, in the agreement, I saw um, that the agreement start date said January first of this year. I assume that can be edited or retroactive.
Yeah, we approved uh, Lattier's agreement, I think, in, at the end of January. So yeah, we, we can make that adjustment.
Thank you. All right, uh, no first readings, ordinances. We're on to ordinances, no third readings, no second readings. We do have a first reading, ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dot zero three, an ordinance approving the application of Pulte Homes of Ohio LLC to rezone approximately eighty-four point nine seven plus or minus acres of property located to the west of Interstate seventy-one, south of US thirty-six, State Route thirty-seven, and east of three Bs and K Road from not zoned to planned residence district pursuant to the city of Sunbury zoning code, declaring an emergency. Again, this is the first reading. Is there, is there any other discussion council would like to have on uh, on the rezoning?
Did want to mention that I had a chance to confirm with um, our development, uh, excuse me, the applicant around road widths. So one thing I'm being very intentional about is that we don't have a Sunbury Meadows Drive two point O. And so we confirmed that, that the roadway um, within the entire development are uh, more in line with what we would see in Rolling Hills, Price Ponds, or um, some of the uh, Sunbury Meadows Streets.
Are they hoping for action tonight, or they just want the emergency after three readings?
I believe they're looking for action after the second reading.
Okay.
Um, we do have a third meeting this month, uh, by the way, I can't remember the date, thirty, thirty-first. Um, I think they're looking for action after the second, if I'm not mistaken.
Please.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I, I do want to give a little bit of credit where credit is due. Um, you know, even going back to Eagle Creek, I want to, I want to say thank you for listening to the Planning and Zoning Commission about the incorporation of the trails, especially the north-south connection. Uh, connectivity is a big focus for the city, and um, I think you did a really nice job leveraging the existing landscape, preserving the woods in the original Eagle Creek, and then also um, complementing uh, this particular development with additional features uh, that I think uh, uh, are attractive to, you know, folks that want to be active, young families, folks that um, are single and want to live in a house, uh, you know, and you know, the lot size this year, I think that's real. We do have a real housing crisis in the region um, in terms of price point. And when you get into ninety-foot lots, you know, you're instantly at a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar price tagging up. Um, so I think this is, I wouldn't even call this an entry home. This isn't an entry-level home. I don't know that there is such a thing anymore, but um, I do appreciate you listening to us, especially on the amenities. That was a big focus for uh, the zoning commission. And um, yeah, that's, I guess that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's all I have.
All right, we are on to new and unfinished business. Uh, let's just go down through the correct order here. Uh, CT Consultants wastewater treatment plant task order number two, tertiary filters. Uh, Mr. Hennessy, would you mind uh, taking a little turn?
Uh, so as uh, Mr. Capel indicated, this was talked about in the Services Committee meeting. We did hold it from the last council meeting uh, as well. So um, so it's been in front of you before, but we haven't taken action. Um, if you're comfortable, hopefully we'll be able to move tonight. So what this is, is it's a second amendment uh, to the original design contract that the city has with CT Consultants. And they're doing the design work for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. So from one point one million gallons per day to two million gallons per day. Um, the tertiary, so the first amendment, well, so there was a base uh, design agreement. Then there was a first amendment to basically accelerate uh, the design services uh, for several components that originally we had anticipated would happen over a series of time. But uh, given the, the growth patterns in Sunbury, we accelerated that. So that was the first amendment to uh, to add seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the design, uh, overall design um, contract. And this is the second amendment, and this amendment is for three hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. It's to add design services for tertiary filters uh, to the wastewater treatment plant design. Um, and just on a high level, tertiary filters improve the quality of the, the water that ultimately, the effluent that ultimately is discharged into the creek. Uh, the tertiary filters were added as a design element, uh, were proposed to be added as a design element. One, because the Ohio EPA has highly encouraged uh, that we add it so that we can get the quality effluent that we need to discharge into the creek. Um, it also will reduce our dependency on chemicals to meet our permit requirements. Um, and it also perhaps opens the door to uh, to some water reuse options longer term, if that's ultimately where the city wants to go. So with that, um, you know, staff is asking for approval this evening. If you're comfortable, um, this does tie into, like I said, the design of the wastewater treatment plant, the schedule for the, the uh, the wastewater treatment plant expansion is to uh, is to bid the project in the first quarter of this year, two hundred and twenty-four, begin construction uh, either late second quarter, early third quarter, uh, with the design completed by December, the fourth quarter of next year.
I make a motion when moved forward with CT's recommendation for tertiary filters.
A motion by Councilman Martin?
Second.
Second by Councilman Capel. Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mr. Drayer?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Seven Y's?
Thank you. All right, we are on to city council rules for two thousand twenty-four. There's a redline version in your packet. And I don't have the page number. Get now sorts.
Eighty-one.
Thank you. Page eighty-one. I, I had reviewed these with staff the other day. I think the changes uh, I mean, lined up with other policies or the charter, um, the, you know, coming out of the pandemic, there was some language in there that referenced the pandemic and virtual meetings and things, and it more or less strikes that. Um, Mr. Hennessy or Mr. Bream, do you have any other feedback comments? I think they're common sense updates, in my opinion.
Correct, minor, I think, in nature. Um, properly identifying staff. Um, the clerk uh, has replaced the fiscal officer in several places where previously we didn't have a clerk. We had fiscal officer doing both duties. Now we're lucky enough to have a clerk. Um, so we, and I think we updated from our bulletin board posting to our window posting. Again, minor changes. These are your rules. Um, I'm encouraging you to pass something tonight. I mean, I've talked about we need to have these moving forward, but you can change these rules at any medium of one emotion and a simple majority. So again, they've been revised and revised and revised. Every year, it seems like we make little tweaks. That's what these are. I'm going to quote the Latin questions.
Any questions or comments? All right, I'll make a motion to approve city council rules for two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Cooper. Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mr. Drayer?
Yes.
Seven Y's?
I didn't vote.
You didn't call Ms. Cooper.
I'm so
Yes.
Yes, Cooper. Cooper.
I'm new. I was just sworn in.
You were just sworn in.
First of the year.
All right, motion passes. Um, do we want to do maybe um, ad hoc new and unfinished business before this last item? Okay. Uh, Mr. Neff, new or unfinished business?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Martin?
Nope.
Mrs. Cooper?
Nothing tonight.
No, here's your grumpy.
Mr. Drayer?
This is it.
Okay. I do, I did have just a couple of items, of items. It's, it's been customary that I've done the state of the city, either in this meeting or potentially the second meeting in January. Um, I wanted to make sure everybody was aware. We are, we are going to change the format of the state of the city. The state of the city is going to be an in-person event this year at, uh, it's going to be hosted at the Big Walnut uh, High School. That is on January thirtieth, uh, the day before our third council meeting. And that will be in person. I think we're going to use their multimedia room. Is that correct?
On the academic commons.
Academic?
It's just
Maybe I don't. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
That's what they call it. I didn't know that either, so.
Perfect, the academic commons. Um, we're going to invite all the celebrities from Sunbury, like Warren, uh, Barry Bennett. Steve Howard will be there. Um, all, all the big, big wakes.
What time on the thirtieth?
So we'll gather at uh, six. We'll have light refreshments. At least that's the plan. The remarks will begin at six thirty.
We'll be, I mean, on a serious note, we're going to reach out to other elected officials, obviously township trustees and um, council, or excuse me, county commissioners and um, school board members and folks like that. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page and uh, we have a lot to celebrate. Um, for those of you who were at, at the Christmas party, you have a lot to be proud of. Uh, our staff has a lot to be proud of. Um, we're on a really good trajectory, both uh, financially and uh, I, I think we're doing uh, a great job managing our growth. So let's continue that and talk about what, what we have going on in the future. Also, um, another item on January twenty-fourth, also at the high school, I believe, this is going to be at the, in the auditorium. Um, the Big Walnut, uh, excuse me, Sunbury, Big Walnut Galena Chamber. Um, and the city of Sunbury are co-hosting an event. It's going to be at the Big Walnut Local Schools High School Auditorium. On the twenty-fourth of January, we are uh, bringing in Betsy Goldstein, um, from Goldstein Consulting to give a presentation on Intel on Intel. And Betsy is not associated with Intel, but she's aggregated quite a bit of information um, from Intel, from the development community, from uh, public officials. And I've attended a couple of her presentations, and I, I think the information is, is eye-opening. Um, but it, it can be presented to your kids, uh, grandparents, teachers. It's, it's not an exclusive event. It's an inclusive event. I would encourage everybody to attend that. Uh, it's very, it's going to be great information for everybody.
Do you give a time?
I think it's six PM, at least for the initial part.
I don't remember. Oh, actually, thank you.
Six PM, we'll do kind of a meet and greet.
Six thirty, shelter that.
Yes. Great. So that's where we are. And we're going to work on uh, putting some content out around, around there. All right, and that's all I have. Um, so I believe we have a need to go into executive session, and I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session per Ohio Revised Code one twenty-one dot two-two G one, to consider the appointment, employment, or dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public official or employee. And we will return to public session um, at some point. And the folks I think will need in the room, Mr. Bream, uh, Mr. Hennessy, uh, Mr. Hennessy or Mr. Bream, who else do we need from a staff perspective? I think that'll be all. So Amber, as long as Daryl can run the computer when you, when you get out, um, you can take off too. All right, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Capel. Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Drayer?
Yes.
Seven Y's?
All right.
We take in a minute before we start this?
What's that?
We take in a minute before we start?
Yeah, we'll probably reconvene in about six and a half minutes.
Okay. Yeah, and sorry, we
All right.
Yeah.
Oh, that was quick.
Wow.
That was quick.
Gee.
Wow.
Two at a time?
Wow.
That was just crazy.
Motion to reconvene.
A motion to reconvene by David Martin.
Second.
Second by Damon Capel. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Capel.
Yes.
Ms. Drayer.
Yes.
Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Seven yeas. We're back in session, public session.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Mr. John Grumney for present pro temp.
I'd like to second.
Second by Councilwoman Cooper. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor St. John, yes. Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Ms. Drayer.
Yes.
Mr. Capel.
Yes.
Seven yeas.
All right. Real quick, can I just say thank you very much for your confidence in me and I am honored and I know this is a team and certainly we'll we'll just continue on as business as usual and be successful. So thank you for that and I certainly appreciate it. So thank you.
All right, next is Planning and Zoning Commission member.
Olsky.
I was gonna nominate Nancy.
Okay, go ahead. We've got a motion.
Nominate Nancy Crawford.
We've got a motion to nominate Nancy Crawford for Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a three-year term.
Second.
We've got a second by Mr. Grumney. Discussion. Do we have any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Jason Stederman.
Got a motion to nominate Jason Stederman. By Damon Capel. I'll second. Any discussion? Any further nominations? All right, roll call on Ms. Nancy Crawford.
All right, Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Ms. Drayer.
Yes.
And Mr. Capel.
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Yep. All right, um, roll call on Jason Stederman.
All right, Mr. Capel.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Ms. Drayer.
Yes.
Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Seven yeas.
All right, good deal. We also had an action item to discuss Board of Zoning appeals. Um, we are going to continue that discussion at our second January, And we've asked Mr. Hennessy to reach out to the applicants. Maybe interviewing potentially. With that said, is there anything else? Please, please don't make a motion to adjourn yet. I have one more item.
Committee assignment.
That's it.
Yep.
Yeah. So one of the responsibilities, Mr. Grumney, in case you didn't know. After you're in the role. By the way, this is a two-year appointment. It's kind of an anomaly in the Sunbury Charter. It's voted on every even year. And the President Pro Tem, one of the responsibilities is that you actually nominate the committees. And this is the committees of the whole. This has been done in different forms or fashion. Probably the first step is to get a committee list from Mr. Hennessy, probably with the existing members. And the way I know it's been done in the past is you solicit feedback. Obviously, the decision is yours. This does not have to be approved by council. It's yours alone. But, you know, you want to have a good working team.
Yeah.
Who those folks are. And I would encourage you to reach out to individual council members over the next couple of weeks. And start filling those slots in. So the committees themselves select their chairs, their own chairs. So.
So it's just to fill the team and the committee and then they, and I would just ask, if you have a particular interest in it and one of the groups that Darrell will send out, please let me know and I'll do my best to try to slot you in to where you'd like to be because I'm a firm believer, if you have an interest in something, you're more likely to be more productive and provide input in something versus being told, hey, you're on this. So if you, if you do have an interest, I'd love to hear what that is. I'll do my best to try. If everybody wants to be, you know, representing the fireboard, that's going to be hard. But, but if, I'll do my best to try to put you in the area you want to be and if not, your second best. So.
They commented their questions. Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Martin.
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn by Mr. Martin. Second by Mr. Neff. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Ms. Drayer.
Yes.
Mr. Caple.
Yes.
Seven yeas. We are adjourned.